Good morning. We're a few minutes tardy today, resuming our work session of Tuesday and Wednesday until today. And I'd like to welcome Commissioner Plyler. He's been on the phone a few times in the last, and they were back and forth, but glad to see our full complement here today. We do want to work, we have, I'm going to ask in just a moment, I'm going to ask Kyle Wolf to kind of review our options where we are, and I guess I'm going to ask all commissioners if anything it wants to, if there's any sort of key movements. But I think it's important that we essentially try to, I think we may need at least, we may need to have a little more discussion, but I do want to mention that there is a timing issue, which is getting the final budget ordinance complete by 2:00. And any change that's made, or mine is adjust, will require lots of checking and double checking. And that's, it has to be right, and it can't be a couple of numbers out of bounds or wrong, and there's a lot of, a lot of totals and subtotals. So with that in line, I'll just ask maybe Kyle to walk through the, just the general, I see we have a handout here with sort of three options on it, and if you want to highlight any part of that, and then we'll sort of check, we'll sort of check temperature at that point.
Yeah, and I think what I would want to add to it is that budget staff, Kyle and his budget staff are compiling a lot of different information, and to the chairman's point, this is one of those things that just has to be right. We actually go back and ten-key it back into the ordinance and all that. And so even on what you're going to see right now, there's, in the presentation, there may be some adjustments that we need to be, that need to be made. I don't think they're really material, and what we're really after is, is the intent of what you want us to translate into the ordinance. You know, what is your intent? And sort of from that perspective. So I guess I'm asking for a little bit of grace and mercy just around, you know, the exactitude of everything that we've got in front of you. But we're close, and I think we can achieve getting a document ready for you by, to, to the extent that there can be some consensus built so that we're working on the right thing. That will be the key to success.
Is that only because we'll grant you mercy?
That's part of that mercy I was just talking about, so absolutely. Kyle, have at it.
Yeah, so I apologize that this is still a little sloppy on this copy here, but, you know, so just as a reminder, we're really kind of working on three different options. We actually, so we do have three budget ordinances that are working, and so if we could get that down to two, or one would be ideal, but anyhow, you've got the...
Yeah, there we go, just so you can see the headers there.
So it was an Linville option, this was the Martin McDaniel option that we talked about yesterday, and changed, and then Woodbury Option C. And then, the one thing I will say that you'll see, that if you have a copy from yesterday, the number for the Rural Hall Mini Cop is going down on the expenditure side and the revenue side. And that's, that's because there's a portion of those funds that are going to be spent out of the law enforcement equitable distribution fund. And so we backed those costs out of these numbers here, so I did want to make sure that, that's one thing that happened that adjusted the numbers. I didn't adjust this number here from yesterday, and so I'll get that squared away before 2:00, so you can see that.
And while you're on that, for just wording that item you just pointed out on the $2,071,000, I wanted to just say other purposes?
Right, I remember that.
Remember that part? There are three things, because they show up individually in others, because they're still talking about pre-K, still talking about social workers, still talking about actually the five positions for health nurses that would go to the health department.
I believe in the budget ordinance that you'll, will consider at 2:00. We did add a section in the budget ordinance to kind of...
Details.
To really clarify some of the things that we're doing with the schools funding this year. In all three, in all three options. And so, so yes, we'll definitely make that clarification in the ordinance. And so, you know, you could see in the Linville-Wisconsin option, there was, you know, a few alternate service levels proposed, as well as some outside agency funding proposed. And you've got the, kind of, this is very similar with the, with the Martin McDaniel plan that we talked about yesterday. And it will add some clarify, we will add some clarifying language there, that there were some positions that the sheriff is willing to let go into detention to kind of, to really supplement this cost here, to provide for the additional positions that he was looking for, just to maintain the same level of staffing for the JIT team. And then in the Woodbury option, again, some alternate service levels are proposed, and then outside agency funding, as well as with the sheriff's office and the public health and the school, the additional school funding down here. And work it over, and what you'll see is, what I will say is, the number in yellow, the 579-834, 504, the 583-718, 640, and the 583-192, 519, those numbers are the correct numbers as far as the adjustments in revenue and expenditures that were made. The fund balance appropriated number may have changed slightly, but it didn't go, it didn't go above, like, specifically for this, but I know it didn't go up above 20 million by any stretch. And then on this tax rate here, it shows the 6993, it's actually 6778. So again, I apologize for the sloppiness here, but I kind of was focused on the ordinances and then kind of rushed on this one, so.
So I guess the question is, we can actually go through each line item on what's in each one of them. We did that yesterday. If we need to do that again, we can. I guess at this point, what's your pleasure?
Yeah, and is there anyone that'd like to, you know, talk particularly now? Or is there a need to have sort of a further kind of caucus or meeting with groups, and see if there's any movement?
I would like to, I would like to have some caucus conversations. I mean, I don't know how, 30 minutes or so, because of course I had to leave earlier yesterday, and I've been trying to really kind of balance work and be here in present for the citizens, but I would like to caucus.
Is that a senate chair?
Just go through them all again, point, and if there's any questions, if there's one or two that, well, probably more than one or two that I have, and then some other comments I have, and maybe some questions is to do with ARPA. Ms. Robinson, I wish you'd find a computer that computes a little bit bigger. I'm, after looking at your sheet last night, I'm going to have to go to the eye doctor again and figure out how much more power I need to see something like that. Now that was, that's hard to do. But anyway, I found most of the stuff. I might have, I might have misread a number here and there, but anyway, I got through it.
So I'm hearing a little, little interest in just stepping through the elements of, kind of the elements outside of the manager's recommended budget for each one of those. And I can, if you want me to, Kyle, I can, I can do that. Is that, I'll try to do it fairly quickly. You want me to step through that real quick?
Yeah.
All right. So I think in big picture terms, you know, the top third of this page is the same across, across all three options. And so that's, and it really rolls up to the manager's recommended budget. The additions that were made in the Wisconsin-Linville option are the Rural Hall Mini Cops, that's actually in all three. You know what that program is, that basically supports the community-oriented policing and really creates an incentive for the towns to have those. You've got the reduction in the tax rate, that was a goal of the Wisconsin-Linville option, that reduces it by $2,059,000, back to the current rate of 6778. You appropriate the inflation contingency from the 2022 Pago. The idea is that we pull that out of the, that Pago CPO, that actually helps out the general fund a bit. That plan includes the soil and water conservation shift from full, part-time to full-time.
I'd say all three, all three plans do.
And all three do, thank you. Attorney's Office, it does provide a new, there was an alternate service level for a new senior assistant attorney, it does provide funding for that. Hairy Veterans Nonprofit, it provides funding for that. Collidium, $275,000, that's been sort of the historical funding level for Collidium, it includes that. The historical funding level for the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership at $20,000, Kernsville Chamber at $5,172. And really, excuse me, to balance this budget, it really does rely on really eliminating special appropriations other than the ones that are listed there. And so the goals of that budget, as I understood it, were really to keep the property tax rate where it is, and try to do that without pushing too much off into next year. Fair enough for the sponsors of that? All right, the Martin, we had it as the Martin McDaniel option, but the leadership on that, again, the top's the same. Rural Hall Mini Cop was added, it does reduce the tax rate as a goal of this plan, to kind of keep that tax rate at the current rate. It appropriates the inflation contingency, as does the other. It has the schools movement that essentially is, we've talked about it a lot, it's a little complicated, but basically it takes the recurring piece that, in my manager's recommended, I had for the, for the computer refresh, kind of shifts that over to do other things in the schools, and then does that refresh as a one-time item. And so next year, you know, you could see computer refresh back in, in the schools asked, because we've essentially funded it one time. It does ultimately keep the amount that was funded in the manager's recommended for the budget, schools, it just gives them some, it provides funding for those options, the pre-K and the social workers and the nurses. What's, we've got, what you'll see in the ordinance when we get through with that, was those nurses will be over in public health.
That's right.
But it keeps that.
Yeah, so what I would just say is, the school number, while it shows 2 million, it's really more like 1.6 because of the 425, 284 that will be in public health.
Yeah, right, got that. All right, but I think the intent of that is real clear. Sheriff's Office JIT Team, it provides $330,000 for that, and then relies on the sheriff eliminating some positions. You'll see those position eliminations affect law enforcement sworn numbers in that part of the ordinance, but that's one of the complexities.
With this, this 330, how many officers?
Three.
Three. Is that?
Three.
Well, I mean, for the 330,000, how many?
Three.
Three, okay.
That's correct.
Three, but it keeps the JIT team at the same staffing level, relying on that, the law enforcement detention positions.
That's the original staffing level.
Original staffing.
That's right. So they would eliminate 10 vacant detention officers, and they would essentially have eight sworn positions and one office assistant.
With those positions, is there vehicles involved in that, or would have to use something that we have?
They already have them.
They already have them, so not a need to purchase new vehicles.
That's an ARPA project. They already, they've been operating three years, and they have the vehicles, they have the equipment, et cetera. This is to continue forward without ARPA.
Any other questions on that? All right, kind of run on through it, soil and water concentration, we talked about. Community and economic development, it does provide $50,000 of the 75, 77,000 asked that Winston Business, Inc. had requested. General services, it does some security enhancements at Health and Human Services Campus, Tulsa, 94,500. And then there are a number of community grants, and I'll just run through these very quickly. ABC of North Carolina, $25, Arts Council, $100,000, Children's Law Center at $50, Crisis Control Ministry at $25,000, Liza's Helping Hands at $15,000, Experiment and Self Reliance for the IDA at $50, and then the operating piece at $40, Friendship Resource Center at $25,000, Hairy Vets at $75,000, Collidium at $275, Memorial Industrial CDC at $5,000, Neighborhood Hands at $100,000, Old Salem at $125,000, River Run Film Festival at $15,000, Union Community Development Corporation at $100,000, Center for Creative Economy at $25, Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership at $20, Kernsville Chamber at $5,200, Piedmont Trad Film Commission at $30, Senior Services at $385,000, Shepherd Center at $35,000, Shepherd Center of Kernsville at $24,000. It does, because you've appropriated that, you reduce that appropriations to other agencies at the full amount that was in the reserve at $1,740,585, Family Services Capital Campaign at $100, Miracle and Sike Capital Campaign at $50, The Muse Winston-Salem Capital Campaign at $50, The Reach Center at $50, and Horizons at $50. And so all that rolls up, it leaves the tax rate the same, which was the goal, relies a little heavily, more heavily on fund balance, and sort of anticipating that we will be in a pretty positive position when we close out June 30th. It sort of anticipates that, and really almost spins a little bit of what would be next year's Pago, which is, all Pago is, is fund balance that's next year's. The next year of fund balance over the 14%. And so I think it's physically responsible from that perspective. It does put a little bit more pressure on, on fund balance, and you know, with the, unless there's a kind of major downturn, which is really the only time we've seen ourselves in trouble with respect to Pago, you know, we don't anticipate that happening, so we feel like it's physically responsible as well. Any questions on that?
Have a couple. Are any of these special appropriations, are, do we have contracts with them, and did the city also give them funds in their budget?
Gordon actually requires that we have, and Gordon does a great job at run and herd over the fact that each one, any special appropriation or community grant has a contract that's associated with it. And we really have made good progress at ensuring that there are deliverables in those special proj, there are deliverables that are noted, and I think perhaps...
I think her question though is, is there a contract within a department that's outside of special appropriations? Is that correct?
Oh, okay.
And so just kind of running down the list, and I'm also relying on Ms. Carter, I know Experiment and Self Reliance is one, that Community Economic Development does have a contract within their department, and they also receive special appropriations.
I think Social Services has a contract with ESR as well.
I think you are correct.
Chantel, if I may, while you're doing that, I think it's also important to know that the ARPA request sometimes was different relative to the request that was asked for in special appropriations.
I don't, I think her question though is about the contracts, not ARPA, so just kind of departmental contracts, just for their normal day-to-day business.
I apologize.
Yeah, so outside of ARPA. So they do Experiment and Self Reliance is one, Senior Services is another, Shepherd Center, I believe, I need to double-check real quick. Ms. Carter just said YMCA is in the cities, we need to really quickly pull up the cities. There's several of these, that's definitely on the city list, and we can, we'll need probably five minutes to do a cross-analysis of that.
Thank you.
Could I follow up on that inquiry? Senior Services has a contract with DSS, is that correct?
Senior Services has a contract with DSS, and they also receive Home and Community Care Block Grant Funds as well.
So with the contract with DSS, that's for Meals on Wheels to a particular category of eligible recipients, is that correct?
I believe that is, that is correct as well.
And so the special appropriation in this budget proposal is to maintain the same level of funding for Meals on Wheels delivery outside of the population that's directly funded through the DSS contract, I believe, is it?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
The one just additional, this is just informational purposes only, as we've been, you know, really trying to get our hands around, you know, the community grants and contracts. For Senior Services, we did discover we've been charged different meal rates for every single, so for DSS, for Home and Community Care Block Grant, and for special appropriations, they've been charging us different meal rates, and that is something that for FY25, we're going to make sure that it is the same amount regardless of the funding source. That's something Ms. Carter's been working on.
Good, thank you.
Okay, if you want me to, I'll dive into the last option that's listed as Woodbury Option, and Commissioner Woodbury, if I say something wrong, stop me, and this, because this is, I'm going to portray it as, you know, hopefully accurately, as we've communicated a little bit around this one. So obviously the top is the same as far as the manager's recommendation. This option does, it has a little more impact, it's the only option that has a tax rate increase.
This option does not have a tax increase.
Oh, that's right, it does not have a tax rate increase.
Yeah.
Pulled it all, okay.
Incorrect.
I'm going to let you do this one, because I think you had the last conversation that I had, so you can characterize.
That was the part I was going to correct you about.
I started out wrong, so he definitely needs to handle that. So a lot happened yesterday afternoon I wasn't around for.
Yeah, they were, yes, yeah, so this is Commissioner Woodbury's kind of second option, and this one does not have a tax increase. Again, so it's very similar to the other two plans, in that it has the Rural Hall Mini Cop program, it reduces the tax rate, appropriates the contingency from Pago, it has the cooperative extension, soil and water, part-time, full-time move. And in this plan, it does include the attorney's additional new position, provides $75,000 to Hairy Vets, which is, I believe, the same as the other two plans, Collidium 275, the same as the other two plans, Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, $20,000, again, very same as the last two plans, and then Kernsville Chamber of Commerce, again, same last two plans. And then it does appropriate $50,000, allocate $50,000 to Trad Cultural Arts for their community grant request. And then alternate service levels, it provides eight positions to the JIT team, so six deputies, one corporal and one sergeant. It does not have the impact on the detention officers. So this is really just the positions in addition. Provides funding for five school nurses to public health, and then it does allocate $1.3 million for pre-K to the school system, and $800,000 for the 10 social workers for the school system. And then again, it reduces the payments to their agencies, reserve, and again, appropriates a little bit more, appropriates the fund balance. And again, that tax rate is incorrect, it keeps the tax rate at 67.78. And again, it just kind of appropriates additional fund balance.
If I may just add a few things, and I do say this, I'll say I missed the latter part of the meeting, so if I say something, and it's because of the lack of the information, because I left early, I do, I stand corrected, but I do want to, before we hopefully go back and caucus, really plead to my other commissioners to less work together around these special appropriations. Because right now, with all sincerity and honesty, there are more than two of us concerned about the process by which you see the special appropriations in Dr. Martin's version. So I hope that we can go back and work through this together. I also would like to say that I think it's a bit disingenuous to the sheriff to give him three officers and ask him to then find other ones through some positions he not using, when before he has come and asked, but we would not do it. But to placate to him right now for the purpose of Option B, oh, now we will do it. So I find it very problematic right now, with all sincerity, how this commission is laying the budget before the community. Now, this is my opinion, and you know, I hope the other commissioners and the citizens receive it as respectfully as I'm trying to say it.
I'll just make one comment on the sheriff issue on the JIT team. Essentially, some of the adjustments made in the list, I had actually freed up, there were reductions that freed up dollars, and actually that 330 reflects that. And I said the JIT team is one of those that's kind of, if you had things that were on the borderline, for me, that was on the borderline. I think the JIT team has done a lot of good work, but it's not very quantifiable, and it's one of those kind of issues, you don't know for sure that the results that reported might not have been handled, might not have shown up elsewhere. And I had that talk with the sheriff. But the sheriff offered, he believes in it, and he offered the 10 positions to go with the three as a swap-in to make that work, and I thought that was a creative solution. Just realize the sheriff has 39 vacancies in the detention center, and what he's doing, because we budget for all 39 of those, he's giving up 10 of those, which leaves him with 29 vacant positions in the detention center. So essentially, that's, I think that's probably a good swap-off to keep approach, he's the budget manager, it's his priority, and he's establishing a priority. I respected that and certainly supported that. So it's not, there's nothing disingenuous about any of that. It's all about trying to work together, to take a program, and we did talk specifically about we need to be more careful on the data collection, and I believe, Chantel Robinson told me, our deputy manager, county manager, said that there's been, I guess renewed or additional conversations with UNCG, who actually does the evaluation for Cure Violence, which is a part of the ARPA funding, just as JIT. And the reason that JIT is here now is because the ARPA funds got spent earlier than the ARPA funds would have allowed, because additional changes were made that spent more money, and that's why we're here today. So that's kind of the background on the sheriff's part. And I mean, sheriff, I mean, we've been both frank about it, and I think we're, I thought that was a good, a good discussion and a good compromise.
Looks like he wants to say something, but what I will say is, and I appreciate you sharing that part with me, Dr. Martin, because maybe I did... you sharing that part with me, Dr. Martin, because maybe I didn't have all of that context. But what I will say is, one, to be more proactive about this conversation, I just hope that in the future, as it relates to the sheriff being able to adjust positioning for the good of his vision to keep this community safe, we have this same type of spirit to move forward. So I will clock this in as this is now what we're doing, and I can appreciate, this is what the commissioners would like to do, work with the sheriff in order to make sure that we are collaboratively working with him, based on what he sees best for the safety of this community. The second point I will make is that, from my understanding, yesterday, the sheriff didn't initiate the conversation about his positions, that was what was offered from our side. I think Chantel came up with the idea of how this could work out to make sure he could try to keep at least the eight that was originally granted to him through ARPA, and I think, after considering what he wants to do with the JIT team, he made the compromise, which shows, I think, you know, a spirit of cooperation ideally across the board. But the, my point about being disingenuous is that I don't think that the intent was to provide the sheriff with legitimately what he needed in a fair way. I think that there is some negotiations going on that doesn't allow him to leverage his positions as he would see fit. That's my opinion.
So if I could just provide clarification, the sheriff during a break asked me, is there any other creative solutions to him getting the JIT team? And my response to him was, the only thing I can think of is you have vacant positions that you could possibly ask the board, but that was it. So it was not any sort of negotiation per se between me and any other commissioner, it was a question that the sheriff asked me, and I told him that was the only thing I knew he potentially had available. So I just wanted to provide clarification on that.
And the first that I heard about the positions, and I'm glad the sheriff's here, is that the sheriff walked up, and he is the one that spoke to me and said, he says, what if I was able to give up 10 detention officers? He says, I've done the arithmetic, and he says, I think that would work. And I said, well, that might work. Sheriff, you're here, you can say, is that an accurate portrayal of our conversation?
That's inaccurate portrayal of the conversation. What Ms. Robinson said exactly. I went to Ms. Robinson, I saw where the chips were falling. My conversation with her was, the option of giving me three JIT officers, that would be like giving an elephant a Tic Tac, that would not work. So I go to her, I say, give me some solution, how can I do this? She gave me a solution. I contemplated in my head and said, you know what, that's the only way I can save my JIT unit. I know you all get caught up in the conversation, you talk about the research. The research does not give you true accurate picture of what's happening with the JIT unit. And that's the piece that I guess we get sideways on. Talk about a JIT unit taking five ounces of fentanyl off of the street that will kill over 1,000 people, you can't measure that. You talk about a JIT unit taking 172 guns off the street, they only go to school 170 days out of the year. You can't quantitatively measure that. You can't measure the success of the JIT unit in three years with the 20 kids that they work. My only thing about this, I know y'all got a lot of things that y'all working trying to balance the budget, my whole priority when I walked in here on Monday, Tuesday, was a JIT unit. That was priority number one. That meant I had to give up whatever, because I understand, and the community understands, the value of that unit. Regardless of what UNCG research says, I know, the people know what that JIT unit does. All the way that I can say that could, if I had to give up 10 to get what I got, I got no problem. I come in peace today. Whatever y'all need from me, keep my JIT unit, I'm here. What you said is accurate, what you said is accurate.
And should we have better, by next year, maybe we have additional data that begins to hone and clarify that in. And it's, and it's beyond numbers of guns, et cetera, it's about the number of youth that you're able to reach, it's kind of like you have a list, you have a list of young people, adolescents, that are, that have had various troubles that your JIT team members are touching, and that's, and that tells an important story about the number, the number of people who have been mentored, the number of people who have gone to Hain's camps, the number of people who have been a piece of that, and to show that their behavior in the past, because at least you would know whether they have been arrested, for example, and then to see is that there, are they still, are they still not, you know, experiencing no arrest? Yes, so there are a number of ways to look at measuring success that helps funding go along. That's the way, that's the way the, if you go inside to more competitive grant funding, those are expectations. And in this case, this is continuing to be, and sheriff, you do know, that your, your budget received the largest departmental kind of budget increase, period. We had one little issue, did a small item that was a little higher, but you've got a substantial increase this year in the manager's budget success, I mean substantial. And, and, and it's, this, I think all this board would agree, we're not backing off in supporting you and your vision of safety in this community. But in this little item, this is a new one, and it is a reasonable request, and I appreciate your response to it, which would ensure continued future.
I appreciate what you all do for me. I do, I really get what's happening. But I just want you to understand, when you talk about security, all you're talking about is the, you can't help in a free world, communities without the baseline, the cornerstone being security, of safety. Security is not the community that we came into six years ago. Have juvenile problems, and if you don't have a JIT unit, you ain't seen problems to measure. I hate to say this, but there's a different world that exists outside of this building. There's a different world that exists that you have no idea of the interactions and what their JIT team does. I appreciate what you all do. Thank you. Let me have my JIT, if you gotta have 10 D.O. off from the cross-street, so be it. Do whatever y'all gotta do to make it work, that's, that's what I do, I come.
The question I have is, why aren't there data being collected through the systematic approach of ARPA? I think Commissioner McDaniel has asked this question before, so that the burden isn't on the sheriff to collect his own data about the impact.
So we, our ARPA compliance manager, Kimberly Shore, absolutely gets reports from Captain Ray on just kind of data collection, but what we've talked about is an evaluation piece, so not just straight output, an evaluation piece. And Captain Ray, along with the sheriff's office, has been committed to doing that. They're starting to work with UNCG, they've already started providing some information so that we could really capture qualitative and quantitative data, because it's one thing to have input, but it's another thing to kind of have measures of, you know, what are measures of success. So we can send you the report that Kimberly Shore, our ARPA compliance manager, which is similar to the sheet that the sheriff provided or showed you all last week, so we do have that, it's just more of the evaluation piece, similar to what we're doing for Cure Violence. Captain Redd, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything else, but I think on our end, we are very committed to helping them with the evaluation component, and I know that they've been committed to doing that and have started working in that direction.
And we actually, Kimberly Price Shore is actually working on a report that, there's a required federal report, and so she has that, she actually emailed this morning, I believe.
The last one, and we can forward that, but again, and it shows like, you know, gun seized and some different stuff like that. So there's information, it's just evaluation and information is kind of two different things. And so we're helping them on the evaluation piece.
And I think in all fairness, and I know that Dr. Martin could, you know, be more, definitely add his opinion to it, but since JIT has started and where we are right now, it's probably hard to capture, you know, data that will definitively tell us as a commission whether we want to continue to fund it. Probably there will need to be, you know, seven to 10 years before we see some kind of definitive impact, based on what's going on out here in the streets with our young people. Hopefully, as human beings, we have comprehensive relative awareness around what difference is being made with young people in our community. And what I would put before the commissioners and the rest of the citizens of Forsyth County is that when it comes to young people, if we are not proactively engaged as adults in trying to get to them before they make mistake, giving them options, then shame on us for not giving them an opportunity to have a good life. Shame on us as the adults. So I appreciate and truly understand, as a public school educator, as well as Dr. Martin, that when it comes to young people, again, we have to put in the resources, the time and effort to distract them from going down the wrong path, especially those young people that have at their doorstep all of the things that can go wrong, and then encourage them to make all of the wrong decisions. So I say kudos to the JIT team for attempting to do it, and in my version, I wish I could have figured out how to do the 11, but that would have created the tax increase, and I couldn't have gotten support from other commissioners to get the 11. But what we were trying to do is to make sure that at least you didn't lose anything through the ARPA process, you kept the eight that, that you had. So thank you.
Chairman Martin, if I may, I have a few things on my heart, so I'm going to just speak abroad, because I was very, I was happy this morning when I got up, so I'll just say that. Then I got a newspaper article that indicated that Sheriff Kimbrough was negotiating with us through the juvenile intervention team, and that he was facing pushback. And that disturbed me and made me sad, because it was me, it was myself during the ARPA process who brought on this JIT team, and I got the votes for that. And we are here again, and budgets, because of my fiduciary duty as a county commissioner, is to negotiate. And as she puts her heels on and walks through the journey as a county manager, it is her role and responsibility to come up with creative opportunities for us to relax budgets, so that we can provide service and funding for social programs such as our special appropriations. Because again, you would know, Sheriff Kimbrough, as we know, I see, we walk it like we talk it, we're both in the community, we see that there are some of these organizations that are transforming our communities, and that's what we want to see, so that you can have less children that you're having to arrest, so that the school systems are having less children that they're having to address, because we're meeting the needs of the families. So I say this because sometimes I hear, and it's very minimum, but I need to say it, that I don't share, I don't support Sheriff Kimbrough. And it's not that I don't support you, I will support you in anything. I take blows all the time for the sheriff's department. And, you know, whatever way we gotta get to, to get there, we're there with you. It's not a, I mean, just like you said over there one time about the inmates, it's not a hotel, and this is, this is not a big bank that we got money growing on trees, we gotta make it work. And we are here, and we are committed, and we're committed to doing it without a burden on the same people that you're having to service in my district. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Let's have a different obligation. Obligation is public safety. The journal wrote what they wrote about pushback, how would you interpret that? I come and ask for eight, you tell me you're giving me three, I don't know what you call it in the world you live in. That's a pushback.
But there was a call for mine yesterday.
But that's a pushback.
Pushback?
Yeah, if I ask for eight, you tell me three, that's my interpretation. Next thing I want to say is this, I want to say this, all due respect. This is not Sheriff Kimbrough that's asking for this. This is the sheriff's office, who is a visionary, telling what is needed. What I'm telling you is that, as an expert of 40 years in this space of law enforcement, I'm telling you what I see. This county is the fourth-largest county, and it would be shameful for us not to have a juvenile unit. Every county, one through seven, has one.
Sheriff Kimbrough, I have lost my child, so you don't have to preach to the, preach to the choir. I get it, I'm just letting you know, on record, it's not for you, this, this message was not for you, no. I said, it was a message abroad, right?
I don't want y'all disagreement to be about.
It is not about you. I just needed others to understand how we get to where we are.
Please don't y'all make this about Sheriff Kimbrough. Sheriff Kimbrough has agreed to whatever you need, I'm good, I'm good. So whatever y'all got to work out in these special appropriations or whatever, don't make it about me, take me from the equation. I'm all right, I'm at peace. Me and my team, we at peace with giving you JIT, we good. I'm all right. Me and you laughed yesterday, I'm good, so whatever y'all got going, you know, I'm good. I have accepted what, what has been dealt to me, I'm all right, because that's my job to make sure this county is safe, and I'm going to do it by whatever is necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, as the hour continues to grow later, we had a request from Commissioner Woodbury that we spend a little time to see if we can get a little closer than we are, and the purpose, obviously, the better we do on that, we get the budget ordinance correct, and we're able, Kyle is able to not go crazy for 30 minutes, 40 minutes, an hour before 2:00, and, because that's a lot of pressure on him, and we've had to go through weights and changes before, after we started our special meeting, so if we could, if it's possible to avoid that, that's great, and I'd suggest we take at least, we have lunchtime coming up, I just suggest that maybe we, we see if we can return about 1:15, if there's anything to, and the media will try to get information, well, maybe this way, I guess we could get any information, I'm not sure, we need to come back here and give it to Kyle, I guess we could just do it. Or we could come back in an hour, you just tell me the, that's the other.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I make a quick clarification about the request coming from my office? Just, just so we understand. It's listed as a new senior assistant attorney position for $135,000. For the past two years, I've been trying to reclassify a paralegal position into this attorney position, and so the net cost of that is only $67,000. What happened is my request was split in two, and so in the continuation budget, I lost a position. So my, my office lost a position, and $67,000 was taken out, that's why the number appears to be $135,000, but the net cost to the county is actually half that much.
So Gordon, if I can confirm or clarify what you're saying for me to understand, you're saying that you would have lost one staff person, but you'd like us to apply that full, that part-time person to a full-time staff person now? In addition to what you need for the full-time staff person?
It's not, there's no part-time, there was a paralegal position, okay? And as the practice of law has changed, you don't have to have as many paralegals, but the work I've taken on is a lot. And my staff level has not changed since I took over as county attorney in 2020. What the continuation budget would do would be to reduce my staff level to below what it was in 2020. So I would lose a position.
What, what the amount that you're paying that paralegal in your budget?
Well, the budgeted amount is $67,736.
All right.
And so that's already been taken out of my budget. So this would add back the amount that would cost for this new attorney position, which is 135.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, this is not a request to increase the size of my staff, it's just trying to change what that, those staff members look like.
No worries, thank you.
Thank you. I have, go ahead. Whenever a question or, in this, and maybe some comments, it's to do with the ARPA funds, when they, the ones that got approved, what, what length of time was it that they had to, was all of them, if some organization got 50,000, was all of that
was all of that appropriated to them at the same time? Or was it overtime? I mean, in, say, like, two years or three, I don't remember all that stuff.
The time for most of the ARPA is, the capital ones is, that we need, the board of commissioners did grant a few extensions. They varies, but most of them are through December 31st.
And it's fair to say they're all over 12 months. It's not, there's no single year ARPA grant. They were granted two years ago.
They were granted.
Or three, in some cases.
They were both aborted different times, but they were granted through December 31st for most of them.
And were they, were they paid in one lump sum? Or were they paid in incremental payments?
It is a monthly reimbursement basis.
So it's a reimbursement by month? So it's not like that your example of 50,000, Organization A did not get 50,000. They got, they had, they got it monthly based on what they spent. It was a reimbursement grant. And they all will expire except for capital. They, all the ones that have people and other things in it will expire this December. And some of them started two years ago, and I guess some of them could have started two and a half years ago. It depends when we approved those grants. So it, the amounts in the ARPA grant are not a single year. And they usually tried to, I mean, they had to, you, what Chantel has referred to earlier with the sheriff in the last report, is that we have to send a lot of reporting to the federal government for that to make sure we're doing something that was in line with the original purposes of the grant. So there's a lot more accounting. And there's a lot more evaluation, her word, evaluation versus just data. And that's where there's been, and with the sheriff's JIT team, we've done some, we're working hard on to try to make that fit. But some other organizations, it's easier to do that with. And they're applying those, and we're doing evaluations. So any way we look at the ARPA grants, they helped during a difficult time, and I think all of us agree with that, that it did. But they're ending. And so in the next fiscal year, some organizations will have six months left of that money. But many times, that money was for something different than what they were already doing. It wasn't just to keep them going. It was to do another thing.
That's correct. In most cases, and just clarification point, you are correct that the, all of them had the, except for capital, had the original expiration of December 31st, 2024. But there are some that Ms. Carter brought before you all a couple months ago that received extensions for their ARPA project.
Not more money, not more money.
That is correct.
They just got, remember reimbursing them month by month. Some of them got it extended. You're not getting any more money, but we'll, you haven't spent it yet, so we'll continue giving you the ARPA funds until you do, and it has a date certain end also.
And that was because the federal government changed their guidelines, which, which we certainly appreciated because it does allow more time for organizations to more appropriately spend their funds.
Well, let me get more to the point. First off, the question about ARPA is all of ARPA, not, not what pertains to the sheriff. I'm, I'm not looking at that right at the present time. I'm just talking about all of, out of, I just took your proposal, Ms. Chairman, and went to see, I was just trying to find out all of the organizations outside that received ARPA funds. And on your list of what you proposed, 10, 10, I believe it's 10, out of all of the ones you've proposed, received ARPA funds, and there was, there's some that I think got some that's not on here. And it's, some of them got, I can't, I can't remember all of the numbers. That's the reason y'all keep it wrote down because y'all can't remember all of it either. You can remember a lot of it, but some of them got a lot of money and they did something with it or doing something with it. And then that helped them in whatever it is they do. But they still won't, they're still requesting more, some additional money from the county and I guess that's just the point.
Can I give you one example? And this is the biggest one, the Arts Council. The Arts Council got the largest ARPA grant that we awarded, the largest. The purpose of their money was not, we have been paying them to offer our summer concerts in the parks. We've been doing that for a while. It's settled into about 100,000. Latest information they got, they said they can't get, they may have to drop a concert because they can't get entertainment in and pay it and do all the stuff for what we've been giving them. But that's been a long time purpose. That's been our normal roughly 100,000. But here's the ARPA money. The ARPA grant was during the pandemic, you had a bunch of artists and art organizations that couldn't do so. They said, we'll give you grants to help you do things that you can do either online or do in large public places or do outside. One of them, I remember, was on a bridge out here over, overpass during that time, which I attended, and outdoor concerts. We'll do, we'll help our art, not the Arts Council, but arts organizations could apply for grants. So that, that grant money for other organizations, not for the Arts Council, will end at some point. I mean, that'll be over. But the purpose for which we actually gave them money to begin with was to help them offer summer concerts for us, sponsored by us. And they would actually get other sponsors. And also, we gave them some money. Some money is in operating costs of what they've already had before ARPA and would be thereafter ARPA. And I think we've seen some fairly good reports. I mean, they're, they're not, they're not, they're not guesstimates. They're, they're based on surveys of people going to arts concerts. They're spending a lot of, people who come here for an arts event, a concert, spend a lot of money in this community. And that money in this community has been quantified. I mean, people gave information, this kind of what I did. I mean, the Arts Council paid for a group, you know, to do that, about 1,000 people surveyed all over. It's an interesting study. They came and reported it to us. And so, so they're probably, they do a lot to improve tax, you know, other taxes, not tax base per se unless an arts organization or locates here. But it keeps restaurants and businesses who do pay taxes. It helps provide them funds for overnight hotels because there are those. It's just like old sale, same kind of thing. So those kind of things, there are different purposes on the art ARPA grants than what we have been giving to the Arts Council. And, and I could take the list. Basically, the ones I included in here were ones we have been funding before. And they're no more than they, what they have been in the past. And almost, and all of them asked for more money. I think in my list, there's one new one that in the past, a long time ago, has received money, but they serve autistic kids. They were here to speak about that. It's the ABC. ABC Development Center, very first one on my list, ABC in North Carolina. And basically, they're having staffing problems, just like everybody else. They asked for a one-time, they asked for 50,000. I said, we'll make 25,000. We'll help them do five different organizations, five different people, and they're inboarding, they're what they do. So I, I mean, I, I mean, I spent some time thinking about each of these. They're almost all the same of what they were a year ago and two years ago. And I'd be happy to go and, I could pretty much go into as much detail as I have on the couple I've told you about. You know, so it's not things we, what was in the budget to begin with, the county's, the manager's continuation budget included 1.7 something five eight million that covered some legacy organs, like, like, I mean, things that were in departments, Senior Services, Center for Creative Economy, and the Downtown Partnership, and the, you know, the Film Commission, and several things. And so that made it a bigger amount, but that 1.7 was all, that's not new, those aren't new requests. They're the, they were in the manager's continuation budget. And the total of all of mine are less than that amount. It's less than what was in the continuation budget. But they have to be identified every year, is that part. So, does that help a little?
Well, if everybody else knows what you've talked about, I don't want you to take special time for me.
I'm a little lost too, but that's okay. Maybe we can get some clarity later.
Kyle, approximately, how long would it take you to come up with the ordinance for us to vote on?
I'm pretty, I'm pretty close. I mean, I worked on it last, I worked on it last night and again, and this morning. I've, I'm fairly confident that I've got all, actually, all three very close to being ready.
Do you think about an hour? It would take you about an hour?
I mean, it would just be, it would be good to have everybody else, have my staff and a few others put their eyes on it.
Eyes on it. So we, I went over and we talked a little bit as a strategy. I mean, obviously, you know, we, our, our job here is to present you with something you can vote on. As a document you can vote on. And so what, and we're going to make sure we take enough time, as much time as it takes to get it done, as a strategy would be, if you, if you come back at, I mean, the real question is, is everybody okay with, are these three options outlined and accurate as options for the board? And does, and are these the three that you want to see for? Are you prepared to vote on one of these?
So I think that I needed to possibly adjust something with Woodbury option, not like it has to per se be one, but based on the sheriff's, you know, commitment to compromise, maybe I could adjust that on my end and figure out how to get somewhere closer to the other option. Hopefully, one comes before us. I'm sure it will be two. But, you know, I, I am very interested in trying to figure out how to move into a space where it's more clean, it's a more clean vote if I can maybe make some adjustments on my end. But I guess I need to talk to you.
Okay.
So I, I wouldn't say that my option is something to, that's, that I am comfortable with right now in light of what the sheriff has said.
Okay.
So, so, so it was a good target that makes sure that Kyle can start his work by 1 o'clock?
I think, I think that'll work. The fallback would be, is, is if staff's still working on it, we could, we could go into session at 2:00. In the special budget meeting, you could recess it, and we could handle the regular formal meeting while his staff is finishing that up. And I, I just want to make sure Kyle's got as much time as he needs to do that. And so, but, but we're going to, if, if, really, he needs to know if there is an option that we are preparing that is not fully defined, we need to know that like 1:00. I mean, we need to know that pretty doggone soon, so. Or it's not going to be developed.
You're really talking about if there are changes.
If there are changes.
If there are any kind of changes or any kind of things that would happen, he needs to know that.
But what I think I'm hearing is, is the, with the limbo option, as good as it is, and we're ready to go with that one. The Commissioner Martin, Chairman Martin, you and Mr. McDaniel's option is, you feel good, it is, there's nothing okay. And so it's really just, just that. So I think we're okay. I think we're okay. And our fallback will be, you know, if, if there's still staff work that needs to be done on it and it's not ready, then we'll just, we'll go ahead and handle the formal meeting and be able to come back and deal with it. I just want to make sure that what is in front of you to vote on is accurate in your mind.
So if there are any changes at all, just as Commissioner Woodbury mentioned, but, you know, she changed hers, or if there were some, well, I might go along with this or that, if there was any kind of changes, do we need to come back together in this room before, like at 1:00 to identify those in here so that then Kyle goes off to work on any changes that were made? Or if there were any changes, do we need to, can we get some kind of consensus and go talk to him?
Let me just try something. Let's just try this. Are we okay, I mean, I know you, you're, you may be okay with one of the other options, Commissioner Woodbury. Is there consensus, I'm just going to ask it, are there four votes on, on one of these? And are we prepared to, do you, do you need to think about that a bit more before we, because if there's four votes, if there, if there's consensus around one of these options, then that would really help us.
I guess I think voting before 2:00 is probably, because essentially, offering that is the same thing as voting.
No, I'm just saying, is there consensus? Is there consensus around working on, around one of these options?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just respond directly to County Manager Watts's question, I think the reality is, even if there is currently a majority of four votes for any particular option, there is, you know, there's always interest in broadening support. And who knows if there may be some modest adjustments that could do that? I don't know sitting here.
Okay, I think I got it.
And I think that's what the break would provide an opportunity to determine.
Then we will keep working on three options. We'll try to further define Commissioner Woodbury's option, and we'll be working towards being ready for the board to vote on any of the three.
What time do we need to make a point to try to get back so it can begin to try to finalize things? Is 1:00 the time or 1:15?
I think 1:15 works.
If it's, if it's doable to conclude before 1:00, could we come back before 1:00?
Time-wise, I can do that because I don't have too awful much now to sort out.
Let's shoot for 1:00, and we'll work hard to make sure. I'm assuming there's not major, major changes, so let's shoot for 1:00.
Okay.
And we're only missing Commissioner Woodbury, but I do think, I do think that the, our county manager is going to review the revisions she talked about in her proposal. And so I'll, he can go forward with that, and then we can recess until 2:00.
Sounds good. So it's fairly simple. I wish she was here to make sure that I was communicating this accurately, but that's exactly what I wanted to do. But my understanding from, from her is what she was interested in doing is, you noticed in the JIT team, she had funded the JIT team with $740,051. And after the discussion, she was, she wanted to go ahead and reduce that to the 330 that are in the other two plans, exactly the way they are in the other two plans. And her intentions were to use the excess revenue, which is 400 and some odd thousand dollars. And she would apply that essentially to fund balance. And so that was her, her, her changes and hopes that three of other of you think that's the best idea in the world. So that's, that's what it was.
All right. Any questions about that? Otherwise, I think we're, we didn't have any movement. We had some, we had a lot of good discussions. I'll appreciate the discussions I was in the last hour. There was no lunch eating. It was, it was good discussions. But I think we're basically where we are with three options.
All right. So when we come back at 2:00 in the formal session, what we will do is, as Chantel worked with a team this morning, and they, we always do a read-through of the ordinance to the, to the, to the syllable almost. And so she is going to step through that, and it's really just an opportunity to tell the public, you know, here's what this audacious document does. It, it sets a tax rate. It, it gives some authorities internally. And she's just going to step through every one of those, really with a focus of what changed. And there are always a few little tweaks in every one of those. And one of that section is a pretty important section. It was to me, and I know it's going to be to her, is the Board Directing Initiative. So she's been working on some of those. She'll share those with you if we need to wordsmith those, we can. And then I think Gordon's going to. And then I think Gordon's going to help a bit with just sort of the process. And so there's sort of the three parts of the presentation that you'll see. What Chantel does across the, across the ordinance is, most of the verbiage is exactly the same in all three, it's just the numbers that change. And then it'll be there for you to, to take whatever action you deem is suitable.
Dudley, before you do that, I didn't get it in in time, not that it'll make any difference, but the Wisconsin Hunt and Limbaugh option, we want to add the JIT team, the three positions to that.
Okay, and he is actively.
He's doing that.
Working on that. So that will be prepared and ready for you.
Yeah, thank you.
We're good. So we will adjourn until 2:00. We'll start at 2:00 and we'll begin with, you'll tee it off of the three things we're doing, we'll vote on the third thing with the end.
All right.